Twenty twenty-three meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Education to order. And I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Trustee Acosta. Trustee Alta.
Here.
Trustee Filicetti.
Here.
Trustee Nichols.
Here.
Trustee Roth.
Here.
Trustee Van Allen.
Here. Trustees, we have a request from Board Member Filicetti to be able to attend remotely due to a medical condition. And it requires a motion from the board to allow that to happen.
I would make that motion.
And I'll second.
Motion by Nichols, second by Roth. And we need a real call vote, please.
Trustee Alta?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Roth?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously of all present. Thank you. And welcome to the meeting, Trustee Filicetti on the screen. Hey, now is the time for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Superintendent Ferris Sabah to lead us in that.
Please stand. Face the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trustees, now is the time to approve today's agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
I would move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Nichols.
I'll second.
Second by Filicetti. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. This is the time for a public comment, which is an opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board on things that are not on today's agenda. And I see one person, if there's anyone else, there are little blue slips on the side there to fill out so that we can be sure to get your name. No rush, you can go ahead and start if you want. And we give three minutes for each comment.
Hi, my name is Cece Panero. I'm the Executive Director of SPIN, the Special Parents Information Network, and we serve families who have kids with disabilities. I am here to thank you for your service. I'm going to hand around our brochures for those of you who don't know about SPIN and my business cards. And we certainly want to thank the County Office of Ed because we serve the same population. We serve all of the alternative education students and the special ed students. And we are very happy with the collaboration. We're very happy to work together with you in any kind of way that we can. We certainly want to thank you so much for your, particularly the special ed fun day that you put on every year. We want to continue that collaboration. And and just sort of, you know, how important it is that, you know, nonprofits like us that serve the population that you serve, that we collaborate together and continue to have this great relationship. Because one of the things that we do is we serve the families when they have a little bit of a problem or an issue. And we serve Santa Cruz and San Benito counties, and we stop five to seven multimillion dollar lawsuits in those counties by giving the parents what they need so they don't have to sue public education. And as many of you know, the encroachment of special ed on the general fund, a lot of people like to complain about that. I am here to not complain about that. I'm here to do something about that. And I'm going to tell you briefly, hopefully, somebody's taking, getting that three minutes and you'll cut me off, pull me off the stage when I get, when I, if I get too long-winded. But briefly, just to tell you a little bit how I came to this work. I was born here and raised here. I went to Santa Cruz City Schools. My dad worked for Santa Cruz City Schools. He was a custodian at Mission Hill Middle School for 27 years. I worked for the schools. I held every position from food service to assistant principal at summer school. I was a union president for the classified union at one year, and the year that I did that, I got the food service lady's an eight percent raise. I'm still very proud of that. But having did do all that then, and that was for 15 years, and then I left there and I became an assistant director for Public Access Television, which is a nonprofit. And I ran for school board, and I served on the Santa Cruz City School Board from 2000 to 2005. And after doing all that, then I decided I can now have an opinion about public education because I've sat on every side of the table, from the union to the board, from being a student, being a worker, working as classified, all the different positions that I that I held. And then I'm like, okay, well, the solution is to help the families with kids with special needs get what they need so they don't have to sue the schools. And I've been doing this for 17 years. And in that time, when I started doing this, there were 12 nonprofits like myself, like SPIN, in the state of California.
See, I think you're out of time.
And I'm out of time. But basically, pretty soon, we're going to have all these family empowerment centers throughout the whole state, and then we'll be able to track the work that we're doing and help public education. So, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Is there anyone else who wishes to address a topic not on today's agenda? All right, we'll close public comment. Thank you. And now is the time, trustees, for the approval of the consent agenda, which has the minutes from the last two meetings and an issue about selling off some surplus vehicles. I'd like a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Roth, second by Filicetti. And to approve the consent agenda, I just need a voice vote. So all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, present, I think I got an aye in there somewhere. Exits correspondence. Do we have any correspondence besides what was in the package?
There was no other correspondence, but there was a request for an inter-district transfer appeal.
Do you want to?
If I could, yeah. So we received an appeal for an inter-district transfer appeal for from a family that was denied by one of the of our school districts. This requires us to have a meeting within 30 days. Since we received this appeal before we were able to prepare for this meeting, and the following school board meeting is going to take place after the 30 days where are you're going to be need to consider calendaring a special board meeting to, or both the appellant to present and also the school to to present as well.
Could that be in place of the regular meeting? Just move it up like a week? I think that would meet the 30 days.
If you, you could reschedule when we, when you get to the calendar, you could reschedule the regular board meeting into the 30-day window, and that would that would allow you to have the transfer at that time.
Okay, so we'll consider that when we get to that part of the agenda. Okay, the next item is Section Seven, Reports, Discussions, and Presentations. And I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sabah to give a report on the Student Trustee Academy.
Yes, it's my pleasure to just begin by introducing. You'll see that we have many students here in the audience with us. And we also have in the audience Andres Ortiz, who is the Coordinator of Student Leadership and Engagement. And also Denise Pittman-Rosas, who is our new Family Engagement Coordinator, who just started with us on July 1st. But the stars in the crowd are our students who are student, who have participated in our Student Trustee Academy. As you remember, this is a program that we launched a year ago. And with students who are either interested in becoming student trustees, who are already student trustees, or just students who wanted to learn more about how education works. And I have to tell you, this is one of the highlights for, in my experience, I get to work with students who are absolutely amazing and inspiring, very engaged and wanting to learn about about how the school system works, because it could be, as you well know, it could be a pretty complicated understanding how the the systems work. And we've, I got to co-present with a couple of folks, which are Andres Ortiz and yes, I'm sorry, and Marlies Nolasco, who is a current board member at Live Oak School District, and also someone who has participated as a mentor for us in our student leadership programs. And so it was really an honor to be able to work with with students, to have them participate in a variety of activities. We talked about a lot of different components related to the importance of 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 how schools work, everything from budgeting. We had a special presentation by Leanne Reyes. We had a very special presentation from our own board president, Mr. Van Allen, who talked about public speaking. We also had an attorney from Ozano Smith talk about the Brown Act and just a variety of great activities that the students got to participate in. And so the, we're going to ask the students to tell us more about the program, why they participated, and all the different components that they that they got to participate in. And we want to just share this list of students who participated in our program and listen to to some of their experiences. And then also, we will, we hope we can have your support in presenting a certificate of completion for our students. And so Andres, are you going to take it from here? We're going to call up a student right away. What is, what's our next step?
Yes, we can go ahead and start calling up the student.
Wonderful. So is this the order that we're going to follow right here, or? Okay, all right. So students, welcome. The floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. Thank you guys so much for having me. My name is Kimberly Quintana Martinez, and I go to Sabah College Prep. I, after my time at the Trustee Academy, I am still unsure if I really want to continue. It was a really interesting process, but I'm not sure if it's for me. And I'll reveal the program was more about the intern or the work ethic of the job of the school boards and how they are involved with the student involvement and the significance, as well as the student significance and involvement in the Student Trustee Academy. Different counties were represented in this program, all from different students and all from different backgrounds. It was led by Ferris, Marlies, and Andres Ortiz. And we had a great guest speakers such as Chelsea Murphy, the law firm of Lasan Smith, Leanne Reyes, and Troy Coe, Bruce Van Allen, and Jessica Taff were some of the many guest speakers that we were able to hear from and were able to learn. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Other than that, we also got to really work on our public speaking skills, and we really got to connect with one another. We got to learn about why we were there, why we wanted to continue being there, and what our plans were after there. I think that's all I have for you guys. Thank you guys so much for having me. And.
Members of the board, Superintendent Sabah, my name is Anaima Losha, and I go to Sabah, and I'm in eighth grade. I don't think I will be a school board trustee. And I would like to thank you guys for taking time out of your day to listen to us speak. What inspired most of us to join the academy was to get an opportunity to strengthen and develop leadership skills and gain insight about how school boards work and the different codes slash rules put in place take effect. Many of us also wanted to know why some schools had bigger budgets than others and how the money was used. A lot of us also joined the academy to know how the schools we attend are operated and the decisions that are made for the schools. Thank you.
Dear members of the board.
You could use a microphone, please.
Yeah. Dear members of the board and Superintendent Sabah, my name is Samira Baltista, and I have, and I am a sophomore student at Watsonville High School. I am honored to have had the opportunity to participate in the four-week Student Trustee Academy. Throughout the program, we were able to learn about the inner workings of the school system through the Brown Act. We also learned Robert's Rule of Order, Equity and Excellence in Education, and insightful public speaking skills taught by Bruce Van Allen, and how school budgets work and their importance. I would like to thank the members of the board for the opportunity to participate in this program. I look forward to applying the knowledge and skills I've gained as I continue my education and pursue my goals. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Miguel Quintana Martinez. I go to Sabah. And I don't find myself ready to become a student trustee yet, but I maybe look forward to it in the future. I believe the purpose of the academy is to give students and prepare them for life and to give them knowledge while teaching them of life skills and how the school board works. It teaches them to budget, amongst other stuff, showing the paths that that choose the decisions and open up student funds, school funds, amongst other things, opening opportunities for students individually, and giving students better knowledge and education further on in life. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Superintendent Sabah. My name is David Hernandez, senior at Pahravelli High School. And I am currently not interested in becoming a school board trustee. I dragged myself out of bed this morning today in order to urge you to support the continuation of the Student Trustee Academy as it has proven invaluable in developing student leadership and ensuring our voices are heard. The Student Trustee Academy equips students with governance, communication, and collaboration skills that not only serve us well during the duration of the program, but for any future endeavors we may pursue. The program also empowers students by giving us a power, a platform to express any ideas and concerns we may have. By involving us in decision-making, we emphasize inclusivity and shared governance. The academy's impact could also extend beyond the participants. It could inspire other students to engage in leadership and advocate for positive change, ultimately creating a ripple effect. In summary, the Student Trustee Academy cultivates leadership, amplifies student voices, and empowers future decision-makers. Let us continue this program to invest in a brighter future. Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, members of the board and Superintendent Sabah. My name is William Rodriguez, and I go to Pahravelli High School. And as I experienced firsthand, being in the Student Board of Student Trustee Academy, it could be a great model towards other counties in the state of California as we learn many life skills such as public speaking, as I am doing right now. We also learn with a little bit more about like the educate, how the education system works. We gather many more informations during our meetings as we participated with one another. And overall, it was a great time that I had. Thank you guys for listening to.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Geronimo, and I'm here with the Student Board of Trustees. And my question was, why would you recommend this program to other students? Oh, and I'm from Pahravelli High School, and I'm not ready to be a student board trustee just yet. So I wouldn't recommend this program because you gain many public speaking skills, which is an important life skill. Also, you meet many new people with similar interests, and I feel that's really important. And having a better understanding as a student in the kind of system you're in and the system that surrounds you. And I would like to thank the board for listening. Thank you.
Hello, members of the board and Superintendent Sabah. My name is Laurel Finlayson. I'm a 12th grade student at Harbor High School. I'd like to thank you all for having us here today. Um, I would say that the Student Trustee Academy gave us an opportunity to grow as leaders in activism, organization, and collaboration, which are all incredibly important as we continue our careers as students and changemakers in the future. The academy did this by showing us how school boards can be an incredible tool for change and how they function, because that's incredibly important for understanding how we can make change as students. The academy also helped create a network of engaged students and faculty that are ready and willing to support young leaders. It united youth from all other, from all over different counties under a desire to make a better future for ourselves and generations of students after us. I would definitely recommend the Student Trustee Academy. And I think it gave us some very valuable tools and lessons that we'll need to become better leaders in the future.
Dear members of the board and Superintendent Ferris Sabah. My name is Bella Alvarez, and I go to Scotts Valley High School, and I will be a student trustee next year. My question was, why is having student leadership opportunities important? And I said, student leadership allows students to use their voice and advocate for their rights in a positive way. Leadership opportunities are especially crucial in our youthful years because there is an immense amount of life skills that go hand in hand with being a student leader, such as being a decision decision-maker and an efficient communicator. Additionally, leadership inspires us to rise and strive for greatness beyond our academics. The sense of leadership is prominent in school and our society today. That being said, student leadership opportunities allow us to make a difference and take action. Thank you.
Members of the board and Superintendent Sabah, my name is Milo, and I'm a rising senior at Harbor High School. While I don't know if I can handle the responsibility of being a trustee, I do have some interesting details to share about them. Despite the importance of student representatives on the board, an extensive study by the University of California, Santa Cruz, has revealed that they don't appear to have the chance to contribute, and many adults don't appear to understand the impact they can have. For one, adults don't appear to care about student opinions, as even if an issue directly concerns students and there is a student representative, they are never asked for their opinion or, and also additionally, adults will believe that they speak for the students and understand their perspectives rather than simply getting one firsthand. For another, adults don't seem to interact with student reports. When a student representative gives you a report on something, the adults will either give a cursory thanks or simply do nothing and move on, never following up or asking follow-up questions, which is a stark contrast to the reports given by other adults, in which case they will have discussions and questions. Finally, adults tend to exclude students from socializing during, while the board is largely a formal event, they, there is some social familiarity among the members, of which the students are largely excluded from. As you can probably tell, this is not a good thing, and it's definitely a problem. That is all.
Members of the board, Superintendent Sabah, my name is Angelica Mendoza. I attend Watsonville High School, and I'm in the 11th grade. I plan on being a trustee. I'd like to thank the board for being here today. Some recommendations the UCSU report gave to combat these issues were as follows. Increase structured opportunities for student trustee participation, create youth-friendly culture, training and support for youth and adult board members, improving public comment and non-representative youth engagement and administrative recommendations. We could bring more attention to the UCSU report by sharing the report with all the board members and others. By doing this, people will be aware of the issues that occur in the boards and make attempts to fix it. Thank you.
Hello, board members. My name is Matthew Lang Simon. I am a rising senior at Soca High, and I will be a student trustee. I'm here to stress the importance of the general public, but also more specifically, students understanding the process of school board meetings and how I think the Student Trustee Academy has done a really good job at getting a small group of people interested in the board meeting process, how it functions, what it does. And I think it would be really beneficial for more students and, of course, the general public to get involved with the school board, understanding the process and becoming more involved as a community and facilitating change that would benefit their lives, their students' lives, and represent their opinions and their values. Thank you.
Hello, board trustees. My name is Ari Gonzalez. I am a high school student from Salinas, California, and I will serve as student trustee of the Salinas Union High School District. So the question, what is a healthy dynamic between students and adults? For an answer that, I'd like to establish what constitutes as healthy dynamic. So as I've defined it, a healthy dynamic between adults and students is a system characterized by continued activity in which positive attitudes are exchanged. Now, the question at hand, why is a healthy dynamic between students and adults important? Well, the way I see it, it serves as an indicator of a center of respect between two, a shared acknowledgement of the individuality of two, and an overall understanding of the professional bond. Further note, these are all qualities that board members should possess because they consolidate the sense of equity required to run effectively in orderly meetings. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Desi Salinas-Holtz, and I'm a sophomore at Watsonville High School. I'd like to thank all of you for taking your time to be here and listening to us, and especially, I'd like to give a special thanks to Ferris Superintendent Andres and Marlies for taking their time to do this class with us, this academy. And yeah, so, so I'm hoping to be a student trustee in the future, possibly, maybe my senior year, so, so in a couple of years. And I feel like this academy has really prepared me for that. So, mother, the question I came here to answer, though, was, how can board members entice students to do more leadership opportunities? And I feel like I can kind of speak on behalf of most students here when I say that we do these leadership opportunities because it matters to us. It's not for like, to get some incentive out of it or something. So saying that, I do think the best way to entice students is by offering like, maybe more resources, like, for example, an iPad, which you are receiving, I guess, to, so they can continue their research and learning this and being a leader. Yeah. So thank you again for listening to all of us. And yeah.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Superintendent Sabah. My name is Toko Mohammed. I go to Scotts Valley High School, and will be going into 10th grade this coming year.
My name is Toko Mohammed. I go to Scotts Valley High School and will be going into 10th grade this coming year. I will be a student trustee on my school's district board. As our last speaker of today, I wanted to take the time to thank everyone who helped make this program possible. I can speak for everyone here when I say that this program was an incredible opportunity. First, I'd like to thank Andres Ortiz, Marlies, Lasco, and Superintendent Sabah for being our leadership facilitators. Their fun teaching style made it so informative and engaging and they got us good snacks. So what can I say? Next, I'd like to thank our guest speakers, Chelsea Murphy, Troy Cope, Leanne Reyes, Bruce Van Allen, Angela Meeker, and Julia Taft. Their presentations were so fun, so communicative to us and they're, they're talking about their fields. They were just so incredible. I was so inspired. Thank you so much. And lastly, I'd like to thank anyone else who made this program possible. I know I can't thank everyone because otherwise we'd be sitting here for way longer than any of us have the patience for. But thank you so much to everyone who made this program such a success. I know this isn't a lot, but I hope this is a simple way to show all of our gratitude for, to you guys. Those, thank you so much for that and thank you for listening to all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to these amazing students. We are so, I could just, I know I can, I'm going to speak on behalf of Andres and Marlies to say that, that it is, it was an actual, an absolute honor working with you and, and learning with you. Before we, we do have some, some certificates that we'd like to award the students, but before we do that, perhaps the board would like to share some comments?
Trustees, yeah. Trustees alto.
Yeah, I just want to say I genuinely enjoyed every single thing all of you said. That was amazing. And I see so much in each and every one of you, like to come up here and stand up here and to be able to share your thoughts is, it's scary. Even now, my heart still races when I'm up here. So I know that was probably scary for some of you. You did amazing. But I did want to say, because I've been thinking about it since Milo brought up the study. I just have to say that that is so incredibly valid and I am like obviously very far removed from high school, but I remember when I ran for office in 2020, I had people constantly telling me like, I was not, I didn't, it was deceitful to say I was a teacher because I'd only done it for three years at that time and I hadn't been in the classroom for 10 years. So how dare I say I was an educator? And you're going to come across people that whether, however many years you've done a job or haven't done a job, how old you are, people are always going to find ways to try and tell you, you don't belong in those spaces, but all of you belong in these spaces. When I was watching all of you, I was like, man, I hope they, I hope they come and take my seat one day. Like genuinely do not let people try and tell you that your opinions as a student trustee, as anything else, don't matter because your voices are incredibly important. And in this capacity, all of us don't go to the schools here anymore. Like we do as much as we can to be community members that understand it, but you understand it a thousand times better than us. So keep sharing your stories, keep putting yourself in leadership positions and really great job. I'm really glad you all came.
Thank you. Other trustee comments? De Sanchez?
Yes, I just want to thank everybody again for being here and then for sharing with us. It's definitely really well appreciated. And I'm just amazed, you know, and I'm very happy to see that you guys all took the effort, the time to actually go through the process. And that's a big part of it. Even if it's not something that you see yourself doing, at least you tried, you know, and that's, that, that speaks volumes. I could never do it, you know, if being in high school, speaking in front of people, like I could never see myself. I never, I never did that, you know, so I definitely commend each and every single one of you. And yeah, and just to kind of continue to what's already been said, you guys are already making a difference in, in our community. Whether you, you believe it or not, you, you really are, and the community is anxious, you know, and is willing to hear and to see more of you. I know she's not here today, but I know Izzy, you know, is one of your students and I've gone to work with her, you know, in, in, in the past and currently. And she is, is doing amazing work. You know, she is, you know, the city manager of Watsonville like knows her, you know, by name and has asked and she's involved with spending, how to spend, you know, $5 million, you know, I read that we're receiving every single year. So they are, so she's making an impact, you know, she's making a difference. And I know that each and every single one of you, whether it's a trustee or whether it's in another format, you know, you two will be able to, to make a difference. So I look forward to hearing all of your stories.
Trustee Ross.
Hi. I would like to say that I've seen growth in this program in one year's time. And the speaking abilities that I saw the very first day you, your group met this year compared to today is phenomenal. I have been involved, I'm old, but I have been involved with youth organizations throughout my life. And one of my major desires is for communication across the ages that respect goes every direction, up, down, and sideways. And I have worked on that through the work I have done with youth. I appreciate hearing about the UCS report and I do hope that we can have that as a scheduled agenda item at some point in time. I was on the Scotts Valley School Board for many years and we started having student representatives and I always wanted to sit next to this student selfishly. And I do understand the frustration of the seemingly unresponsive older population to what you have to say. It's real, but in no way, in no way give up because your words do matter. And whether they appear to hit the adult or older person that you might be talking to, they're hearing it. So please continue the speaking out. And it does not bother me that you're not immediately going to come or go to be on a school board. But this education has been planted in you so that you are aware of what it is like to serve on a public agency or in public office. I wish I had had that at your age. So it's in there in you. You know what it is now like. You also know what, when you go before one of these public agencies on how to be effective in your communication with them. So thank you so much for putting this time in. And as far as I'm concerned, this board will continue in its outreach for this kind of education to our county. And I appreciate that you took the opportunity. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Phil said he, did you want to make a comment? I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
No problem, Bruce. Thank you very much. I, I'm kind of smiling about the report because one of the adages I learned early on was nothing about us is for us without us. And so many times people are making important, life-changing decisions without involving the people that are directly affected. So I appreciate that you stepped up and made, made the first steps in getting involved in that process. To those of you who don't think you're going to go on, thank you anyway. And I, I really hope that many of you will go on because now you have some background and training to be even more effective. Selfishly, I'd like to use some of the things that you were taught to do our own board onboarding. Because I, the types of reports and, and interactions, I think would be helpful to any board member that's joining a board. And last but not least, of course, I'm going to bug Ferris because we still don't have our own student trustee. And I'm really, really, really want to see that. Thank you. Thank you so much for being a part of the program and I'm done, Bruce.
Thank you, Rose. It was an utter blast and pleasure for me to be part of the academy this year and I'm kind of hoping I get to do it again because that was really fun and I am so impressed by the students for how much you really get what it's like to be in school now and how that fits the bigger picture that, that we're all struggling to understand and do better with and I don't know, I'm running out of words. I did, I just, I love you and I'm just so pleased that you were able to take part this year and whichever paths you take in the future, you have our love and our support. We're, we are, this board is here for you really, where you're back. And, and this was an opportunity for us to share a bit and help advance some of you and it was a great pleasure to be part of. I also want to thank Andres and Marlies and Dr. Sabah for their leadership in this and they did a fabulous job for the, the times that I was there and I, I just, it was really great to see you guys in action and good work. So thank you all. We're gonna, we have your certificates here and we're going to present them to you and Dr. Sabah and I will lead that. So once again, thank you very much. I'm really glad you were here today too, to be part of this.
I'm going to ask President Van Allen and instructors, Marlies Nolasco and Andres Ortiz to join me here. So our students are going to be receiving a certificate of completion for participating in this academy. And maybe somebody could hold this for me. That'd be great. And so I'm thinking we'll, we'll line up here and then students can come on up and, and then at the end we'll have a group picture with the board. And so we'll start with Bella Alvarez. So much. And then you can take a seat and then we'll call everybody back up. Amira Bautista. I don't believe she's here, but Isabella Brandon. Lowell Finlayson. David Hernandez. Jacqueline Geronimo. Anayi Mendoza. Angelica Mendoza. Toko Mohammed. Milo, go. Jesús Quintana. Kimberly Quintana. Miguel Quintana. William Rodriguez. Desi Salinas-Holtz. And I'd like to give a shout out to Jennifer. Jennifer Salinas-Holtz, who's here with us from PBUSD. Matt Simon. Jimena Vázquez. Okay. All right. Well, we'd like to take a picture with students. If you could, call, come on up. Join us up here and I'm thinking maybe the board could stand up for the picture and that way we could see you. Otherwise you won't be seen. That would be even better. Yeah. If the board maybe could come, join us. Yes.
Okay, this is pretty wide. Let's see if we can do it with the SLR. It'll definitely work on the phones. Okay, so I'm going to take a couple of photos with this and then one on the phone as well. Everybody hold up your certificates and say trustees on three, one, two, three, trustees. Couple more. And hold that. Sorry, I'm just going to move this because it's kind of in the way. Perfect. All right, look right here. One, two, three, trustees. Awesome. Thanks, everybody.
I did want to share, as the students are, are exiting, they're going to be going into another, they're going to be going back to a conference room upstairs and they'll be receiving their iPads and in a, in a little tote bag. I did want to share with you that with your support, we would like to move forward with the plan that we discussed in a previous meeting, which would be that we will continue to try to get a student from our, from our alternative schools. But we would like to have your support in creating an application process for one of these students to apply to be a trustee, a board trustee. So we could have two students, one from our alternative schools and one from this group would be a student that is not going to be a student trustee on a, on a district board. And when we brought it up to the students, there was a lot of excitement about the possibility. And so with your support, we'd like to do that. We would have a, an application process and then an interview process. And then you would select the student trustee and there would be a countywide trustee.
Good to be.
Do we still have Rose in our? So she's, she's on, she's her comment. There we are. Okay. Rose is still here. Well, that sounds wonderful. We'll move forward with it then.
Okay, trustees, we are now to, first of all, that was just a blast. And I'll just have to say it again. I, I just, I love this COE for wanting to do that and pulling it off and doing such a great job. And just, it's our commitment to the students and it's really important. Okay, we're at section eight, new business and action items. The first one is 8.1. This is a resolution authorizing interfund loans for cash flow purposes when we need it. And let me see if, and Ray's wants to introduce this.
Thank you. This is what we put into the housekeeping category of our annual business. This is a annual resolution that authorizes interfund loans for cash flow purposes. Occasionally there are cash shortages in certain segregated funds. In particular, you can think about our child development or cafeteria fund wherein we apply for reimbursement, but then the reimbursement oftentimes takes three. for reimbursement, but then the reimbursement oftentimes takes three months or longer to get to us. Meanwhile, cash flow is still going out. So, on occasion, we have to do temporary loans until we receive the payments back in from the federal and/or state government. I do want to point out that in the now, therefore, it is hereby resolved paragraph, there is a typo and it's a very important typo. This resolution would be actually for the 2023-24 fiscal year, not the 22-23 fiscal year. So, I would respectfully request that you accept this resolution with that correction.
Trustees, any questions or comments? And I would like a, a motion with the amendment to correct that typo date. Motion, please.
Motion to approve as amended.
By Filicetti, second.
I'll second.
Second by Roth, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Acosta.
Aye.
Trustee Alto.
Yes.
Trustee Filicetti.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Ross.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
President Van Allen.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously of all present. Thank you. And now, we're at item 8.2, which is to approve some budget revisions. And again, Yan raise.
Thank you. So, a slight correction, we don't actually have budget revisions that we wanted to talk to you about. However, this memo should look really familiar to everyone. This is normally on our consent agenda when we present a record for you as far as what budget revisions we have made. We won't be making July revisions until our next board meeting. However, two very important contracts have come up that we would like to enter into prior to the commencement of the fiscal year. If we wait to bring this item to you, then we would miss the window of being able to enter into the contract. And these, both of these contracts require Pacheco compliance. So, I'm pulling this as a discussion and action item, simply to let you know that we will be bringing the actual debits and credits budget items to you at our next board meeting. But for now, because of the timing issue, we do want to give you the Pacheco disclosure. So, the first contract would be in the amount of $150,000 in order to obtain a school psychologist service for the alternative education program. I do want to point out that we did budget for this item. However, it was in the category of staff salaries. And since we were unable to hire staff, we need to move this to a contract. And because it's a contract, that triggers our Pacheco compliance. The second item is for a very exciting new robotics initiative. There's the smile, okay. With X Academy, we're going to be entering into a contract for $50,000 in order to establish a robotics program that will be serving our high school students, both in the North and South County of Santa Cruz. This is a very exciting initiative, but we do again, want to get everything in place contractually before its school year begins.
Since your voice vote, do we need a vote to approve those, those notifications?
I would say yes, as this item is generally on your consent agenda. And it's to give me preapproval to enter into the contract and then I'll bring you the budget revision at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, I was just jumping ahead. I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Roth.
Second.
Second by Nichols. And now, all in favor, say aye, please. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks for catching me on that. Okay, we're now to item 8.3. This is the adoption of our, our own board's governance handbook. The main thing that changed from last time was the addition of the sections related to selection of officers and our commitment to being prepared for our board meetings. And I took language, I kind of made up the part about the election of officers, but it was based on our practices as, as I understood them. And the preparation for meetings was primarily drawn from a memo that Dr. Sabah sent us several weeks ago. So, that's the only thing, this, this would be now the time to adopt this board governance handbook. And let me see if there's any comments or questions from trustees.
What you did.
Trustee Filicetti has a.
Trustee Filicetti.
Thank you, Bruce. I was kind of wondering how we came up with those two sections. And I think it's a really important addition to the handbook and will serve us well. Thank you very much for both your work and Dr. Sabah's work on the last two sections.
Thanks. So, board, we're going to have to do two things today. We're going to have to have a motion to adopt this governance handbook. And then as Luann, our consultant, has told us, we will all need to sign it. And do we have a copy of it for signing available or not?
Little signatures available?
Okay, okay. So, so by approving it, we're going to be approving for Veronese to apply our digital signatures. So, I'd love to get a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Roth.
Second.
Looks like Alto got the second. Okay, and is it a roll call? It says roll call, yeah. So, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Acosta. Trustee Alto.
Yes.
Trustee Filicetti.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Ross.
Yes.
President Van Allen.
Motion carries unanimously of all present. That completes that section of our agenda and we're now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, President Van Allen. I wanted to start with just some announcements that I'd like to share with you. Perhaps we could fill up the screen on this one. Just as some things that are taking place, you may have heard that the, that the math standards have been approved at the state level. And that's going to eventually provide us some, you know, some new direction as to the implementation of math in California. It looks like, based on the timelines, that, that we're not going to be seeing curriculum that will be available to us for quite some time. But the county office of education is, is looking to, our ed services department is looking to provide support, to build awareness about what the new standards contain and to really start helping our math instructors and thinking about what, what they're going to mean for, for our students. Kevin Drinker, Kevin Drinker is our math coordinator and he's, one of his, the wonderful activities as he offers families in Santa Cruz County is our family math nights, which are very fun. And he's offering one on July 28th from 4:30 to 7 o'clock here, here at the COE. And it's a great opportunity for, for students from, I think, grades four through 12 to be able to participate and really just enhance and engage in math in a, in a fun way. We also wanted to invite you again to our admin kickoff on August 1st. The students that were here, present, some of them are going to be part of a panel of students and who, and they'll be sharing some of their experiences. And they'll also be talking about that UCSC report that was mentioned today, which I think is really powerful and, and, and is definitely going to have an impact in how, in how we participate with students and listen to their, to, to their voices. I'll also be speaking about trust and leadership that day. So, it'd be a great opportunity to, to be there and, and, and support all of the administrators who are going to be at our kickoff. Our student services team with support from lots of folks at the COE and the United Way are going to be participating in Stuff the Bus here at the COE on August 5th. Oh, wait, is this, is it, no, it's, it's going to be at Kaiser, the Kaiser, yeah, that's, there's, that's a different event when we, yeah, at the Kaiser Arena, sorry about that. And, and, and then, yeah, once we bring the backpacks here, we bring them here and we, we stack them. But so, on August 5th, you'll receive some information about Stuff the Bus. It's a wonderful event. We help students who, to get ready, especially students who are experiencing homelessness. And we, last time, we prepared over 1,600, I believe, 1,650 books. We're, so we're really excited about that opportunity and be great for you to be a part of that, of that event. We'll also be having a manager's retreat on August 2nd and also a staff orientation on August 7th. And so, we'd love it for you to be a part of those, just to say hello or, or to participate with us in those activities. I wanted to share with you just some of the, some of the updates or that are taking place. Our robotics program, as you heard from that contract, we're looking to launch. We, we shared a little bit more detail about what we're hoping to do. We're starting with robotics teams, both in North County and South County with X Academy. We're also working with our, the middle schools across the, the county to have maker spaces so that we can expose students to the idea of producing 3D with 3D printers and, and being able to, to, for them to, to tap into their creativity about, and the power of, of, of robotics and kind of steam learning, which is, which is in a hands-on way, which is very exciting. And so, we, you will be giving you updates at some point. We'll be ready to come back and, and present, provide a more comprehensive report as we are further along with the process. But we're working with, with Cabrillo College, with our, with all the school districts and other, we've reached out to Joby as well. And we're excited about the opportunities, getting mentors, engineering mentors to work with students. And I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for students. I shared with you that we were going to be recruiting students to, a, a student to participate as a member of this board. One of the things that Andres Ortiz is, is doing is starting the process of recruiting student for our student leadership groups. We have lots of groups, one who focuses on, one is a Black Student Union, another is the Youth for Environmental Action, the youth, young artists taking action, the, I know it's going to be, I should have written it down. We're, so, oh, there we go, thank you. The Queer and Trans Youth Council and the, we're starting a multi-link of youth taking action group, which is a new, a new group. And we're also, last year, we partnered with, with Monarch Services on the Youth Mental Health Leadership Council. So, it's quite a constellation of different leadership groups. And these students are part of the Youth Led Alliance, which is a leadership alliance, a youth led, youth led leadership alliance, which is kind of, each of these groups sends a representative, we meet on a monthly basis and they, they talk about all the different things they're working on. And so, we're really excited about, about how these programs are growing and how we're making these opportunities available for students across the county. I wanted to share with you that we had our Narcan distribution last month and it was a great success. We, we distributed over 540 boxes of naloxone, which is brand name Narcan, which is a medication that neutralizes the effects of opioids for, for students, I mean, for students, for anybody, students or adults who are, who may be impacted by, by an opioid. We have seen a significant increase in the, in the use of opioids and, and the number of people who are being, who are, go to the emergency room as opposed to overdoses among the young, young, young people. We are, also have seen the first xylazine death. Xylazine is a, it's a medicine or a drug that is used for, to incapacitate animals. And they are, it's now being put into, into street drugs. And it's, Narcan does not actually neutralize it. And so, it's a deadly drug that is of great concern to us. And we're in the East Coast, xylazine is, is showing up a lot in, in a lot of cases of overdoses. And we're very concerned that we're going to be seeing a lot more xylazine in this area, reminding us about the preventative aspects that we need to, that are also part of our effort, providing support for students, mental health support, ensuring this, that, that young people have the support they need to overcome trauma and, and be less likely to self-medicate with street drugs. One, you know, during the COVID pandemic, we started working a lot closer with our medical providers to learn about COVID and testing. And, you know, schools started getting involved a lot more than we wanted to when it came to kind of the medical side of, of keeping our students and our, and our staff safe. But one of the benefits of this, of that relationship has been a much closer, much closer ties with dental providers, medical providers. And we brainstormed an idea of working with our medical providers to identify and prioritize health issues that we want to incorporate into the classroom. Because we felt like when we identified, for example, that, let's say opioids was a concern, and fentanyl was a concern for us, we would maybe do a presentation for families online. But we thought, well, what about the health courses, the PE courses, the, the elementary courses? How are we going to help provide some information to, to our students in that, in that modality? And we thought, why not twice a year, we get together with our medical providers from, from our health services agencies and local pediatricians, bring health teachers and PE teachers and administrators working with our ed services team and identify what are the priorities when it comes to healthcare. For example, the levels of immunization in our county are dropping significantly. And that team would look at the health standards of California, which, which are California standards, they would look and figure out how to create content, curriculum, instructional content to be made available, not only to the teacher who's sitting in the committee, but every health teacher in the county. And say, here's how you can incorporate it. And if it's, if it's something you would, it would be best if, if a, if a guest speaker, when I, I taught health when I was, I, you know, sometimes they assign you a Singleton course, even though you're not credentialed for it. And I had to, I had to teach health when I was in, at Aftos High School. And I was quite happy when they brought in guest speakers in areas that I had no expertise, right? And so, so they, so this could also be an opportunity to bring in guest speakers, nurses, doctors, or other, other experts in the field to be able to present this information. And so, so we're really excited about this. We're looking at this, these two, two days, two times a year where this group will come together, look at what's happening, what's real and what is necessary when it comes to health. And, and, and then start developing instructional content that will be made available right away for our schools. And we're thinking that this is going to, instead of waiting until the states starts incorporating some concepts, which could take years, we would be able to incorporate these in real time, which I think would be, would be a benefit to our students. And, and I think that our medical providers are seeing this as an opportunity because they feel like this will shorten the distance between what the medical community is saying is needed and what, what, and parents and students and the educational. And I also wanted to share with you that we have been partnering with the sheriff's department and all law enforcement agencies to develop a, what we'll call a school command and response program, which is have a, a, when, if there is a incident of a dangerous incident on a school site and we have to either evacuate students or, or lock down to schools, for the first time ever, we have, we are all going to be using the same protocols. Every school in the county, every law agency in Santa Cruz County and every fire agency in the county has now come together and we have agreed on the same protocols and the same training for all staff and students. And that means when you see like on this wall, you'll see a flip chart of emergency response protocols. So, those will get replaced and you would have the same, the same signage, the same training, the same verbiage being used over the, over the intercom when we're evacuating and the same response from law enforcement, regardless of which agency. Huge step forward and I think it's going to keep people safer, it's going to make it a lot easier when teachers are moving across district lines, when students are moving across district lines, you're going to see the same protocols, the same process. And we also think that it's, it's, when it comes to the training for law enforcement, for example, in a lockdown situation, if the doors, if the, a teacher may have to work with students to barricade a door, if that's, if, if they're in that kind of situation, then when they hear a knock on the door and they identify themselves as law enforcement, the protocol was different for every agency. They all had different, some of them were going to slide a business card under the door, some of them were going to use a code. And so, now we're going to have a consistent protocol for all law enforcement. So, we'll keep you up to date on this training. We're training our first school district on Tuesday. So, we're very excited about this. And I wish I had it, I should have thought of it, but the, 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 the open, the first page of the, of the, of the presentation is the logos of every school district, every law enforcement agency and every fire department in the county, all on page, showing our unified approach. So, very exciting and more, more information to come on that for sure. Couple of other, sorry, I don't, try to, try to keep going. I wanted to share with you that, working with, with Leanne and, and we've been, we've looking at the accessing hardship funding, and that's a CO instead of COE, for, so looking at the possibility of accessing funding through the state to be able to identify, to, to, to build. to be able to identify to 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 build. And most districts, they have the ability to have a bond measure. And you've, you know, districts are able to offer a bond measure. Well, county offices of education don't have options. That's not an option for county office of education. And if you visited any of our, some of our, not any, but some of our sites, for example, in in Watsonville or or actually in many locations for alternative programs, they're not in good shape. And we have the opportunity to ask to request apply for hardship funding that would allow us to acquire acquire land and 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 build replace some of these these facilities that we currently have. And so we are in the very early stages of just looking, we we find out how much money we actually would qualify for, identifying the possibilities of which how we would use. So some examples, for example, you know, we have some special education classrooms that may need. We need some some, there's some schools in Watsonville that really are in need of of additional of repair and improvement or replacement. In, for example, in San Lorenzo Valley, looking at some better better options there. So I wanted to just introduce, let you know that we're just starting that process. We're looking to see how much funding we'd be able to apply for. And because we are going to be bringing some some, once we have a better idea of what our opportunities are. The great thing about this is that when the because we don't qualify for a bond, instead of us having to come up with a match as school districts have to, the state actually covers that match. And that means so they give us both sides of the of the cost of that. And so then we have to look at what the cost, you know, the cost of acquiring the land and purchasing. And there's strings attached to that. And it takes a long time that the the approval process takes years in the building, you know, it could take up to five years from once we we start, we identify, get the get the get the the funding and we're able to actually break ground and start building. But we're really fortunate that we have Leanne Reyes here. She has a lot of experience in in this area. And we have some really great consultants who we're going to be working with to help us work through the the navigate through this process. But I think all in all, it's really an opportunity for us to to make some improvements in facilities and deliver better services to our students. And I believe that. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Okay. When I my children started back in the dark ages in public education up in Scotts Valley, I got immediately involved in emergency planning. And I just want to say, wow, because it was hard then, but we started. And we are going to excuse me, thank you. It was hard then, but to see a united effort across the county only makes complete sense. My question is, are invitations out to the private schools too?
That's a a great question. So yes, that they'll we'll eventually get to them this year. So first is it's the traditional schools and charter schools will be will be second in that. The great thing is every presentation is going to include a member of the law enforcement, whoever is the agency responsible for that area. Well, a representative from the fire, from a local fire department and an educator will be a part of every training. And that's going to be true for both for our our all our schools. And then, once we get through our traditional charter schools, we will, we will also be providing that information to private schools as well. And and so we we will be sure to make everything that we're doing available to them. There may be a cost, however, that we have to charge. If there is any costs involved in staff time or materials or printing or anything, we would be required to charge our private schools for those for that cost. And but generally, it's not, you know, something that would be difficult for them to to. But we definitely, from a safety point of view, we absolutely want to include our our private schools.
Second question, I'm just a return from a trip back east. And what I noticed at the airport, I was at a college and a big public park is that they had Narcan boxes. Have we thought about that or are we doing that?
You're talking about.
Yeah, I break the glass and or open it and the Narcan is available.
So one of the things that the our public health agency is is looking at our, what are they called when you it's like a vending machine? So a vending machine that they're looking at putting in at public spaces. But it's it does require, it does require having a phone, a smartphone. You get it for free, but you have to set up an account. So it's not break the glass and and get it for anybody.
Because these were just where you could grab it.
Right.
Use it.
And so 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 I haven't heard about that kind of then, you know, availability where you could break the glass and get it. It makes sense because who has time if you're in an emergency to download an app, right? But but having Narcan available, our distribution is not only for parents and families, but also youth. And I think that that idea of possibly having them in in areas. One of the things that we will be sharing with you in the future is the number of overdoses that are taking place and it is increasing and it is targeted in certain areas. And so those areas could possibly be the focus of. I do understand, though, that the the number one place for opioid overdoses is in the home. And so getting them into people's medicine cabinets or, you know, and at the home is is been a is part of our priority.
It was just surprising and because I saw him in so many places.
Trustee Phil said he have your hand up.
Ferris, I think you jumped over the parent new parent engagement or new parent orientation.
I did. I apologize. I had that bullet on there and I skipped over it. So we just hired our family engagement coordinator Denise Pitmarosas, who was here earlier for for when the students were here. So Denise is is longtime staff member with this with the county office of education. She's worked with the our our real DUI, she's worked with mock trial, she's worked with our student services program. And and so she is, it's a new position that we've created to, we have a lot of different kind of objectives. But one of them is to help facilitate the network of parent and family engagement coordinators that Angela has been facilitating and really support that group. One is to support our low our our parent and family engagement with our alt ed and our special education programs. And really, it's just another layer of making sure that we're always thinking about how we're engaging our families, whether the target population is is countywide kind of parents at large or our own parents in our programs or district parents, like working with the district to support. And so you'll be hearing more about that as as we're really excited to have Denise as part of the team. We've also kind of Nikki Barra, who is is our chief information officer. He's, we are looking at it at being engagement and as as what is it? What is the current department now? Family Engagement?
Thank you, Superintendent Sabo. So we did a little bit of a reorganization as part of hiring Denise as our family engagement coordinator. And we now have the communications and engagement department in the superintendent's office, which I'm my title changed to the director of communications and engagement. And we ended up reorganizing to also incorporate the student leadership and engagement program, which you just saw earlier in that. So it's a focused effort with community engagement through our general communication strategy, which you heard about last summer, family engagement, which Denise is leading, and student engagement, which Andres is leading. And we have those all in one nice neat structure now. Thank you.
Wow, that's fabulous. The other question I had, I'm not there today because this time of day is particularly difficult for me. But I see that we're going to have our administrative kickoff at eight thirty. So I'm actually going to try to spend my my forty second anniversary with you, Ferris. If you tell me where it is at Seaside.
So this is a so you're coming to the.
The one on August first.
Okay, so this is going to be at the Seaside Golf Course. And I believe it starts at nine. We're gonna, no, it starts at eight thirty? It starts at eight thirty. So yes, please join us for for breakfast and 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 we look forward to seeing you there.
And that's and that's the one that's not not Seaside Seaside.
The golf course.
Golf course one. Okay. I really, really hope to see you then.
Yes. Oh, I have said too. And I I did want to share just this. I I finally got it. This this image, if you can make it bigger also for the so this is the school training, just with so you could just see all the all the different logos from from so soon we'll add our our charter school logos as well. And we are also making this training available to our preschools as well. And and so it's just you'll you'll see every every the ten school districts plus the county office of education, all the fire agencies and all law enforcement in one.
A great accomplishment. Thank you.
I note that we're never ever going to let Brian loose.
That's right. Yeah, he's he's gonna, he's gonna be there longer than me, I think.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Spa. This is time for trustee reports. Let me start with Rose. That's okay with you.
That's I'll be really brief. I was able to attend the online Capitol Advisors Budget Perspectives Workshop. And it was kind of it was interesting to me because it was a much broader perspective because I knew they were talking to a whole bunch of people. Man, every year, every year, everybody's very conservative as they should be. And every year they've said, oh, my gosh, we've got so much more money. And this year they're not saying that. And I think it's going to be an interesting interesting year, Leanne. That that's my comment.
Thank you. Let's start down with Sandra next trustee report.
I I also zoomed in on that budget perspective workshop. And I didn't, I didn't find it to be I didn't, I didn't find it to be all that helpful to me to watch the whole thing. I I watched it for the first segment. And did I did I hear Rose say something about it was all men? I noticed that too.
No, no, it wasn't all men. They're ladies presenters.
Pardon?
No, you must know stayed long enough. They're definitely lady presenters.
Okay. Yeah, it was the first, the first segment that that was all men and I I didn't give it enough of a try. Okay. I I I don't think I did anything else that was is worthy of report. But I did, I did pick up on something that you were saying, Ferris, in in your report about these student leadership groups. And I I heard you say that there is a multilingual group that that meets and did I hear you say that?
So what I what I shared was that we are going to be launching a multilingual group in twenty three, twenty four. That's the new one for this year. It's going to be the the addition and Marlies Velasco is participating, is helping us with the selection and of students and of that of that group.
Thank you.
You know, it was a pretty fast month. I don't know that I have anything to report.
I have two comments before I go into my actual report. First of all, the student trustees, I want to give kudos to just kind of the more of a diverse body that we have in terms of gender and the location of the county, even outside of our county representation as well. So that was really good. And then I also want to mention election twenty twenty four right around the corner. But there is an initiative bond specifically for public education facilities that fourteen billion dollars for public education, which includes community colleges. But that's that's likely going to come to our attention, maybe two forty seven. So hopefully we can get some traction on 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 that on that end. Okay, so in terms of my reports, I there's three specific dates or events that I do want to call out. The first one on June twenty seventh, we had our for well for Dr. Rodriguez, PVUSD superintendent. I was able to attend, be there in person. July tenth, also the board budget workshop virtually, I went to that one. And then June thirtieth, and this is what I want to spend most of my time talking about. But June thirtieth was a pretty big day, a pretty big moment, I would say for me, for us. And that's when Robert Rivas was sworn in as his assembly speaker. And I was debating whether to go or not, but I decided to go and I'm really glad I did because it was, it was, it was impressive. It was definitely eye opener and a good experience. And first and foremost, Robert Rivas wants to say hi to everybody on this board. He wanted me to tell you guys that. And then Bill Munning specifically called out Bruce, you know, wanted to say hi as well. Hope you're doing well. And so anyways, so Robert Rivas, when I went to college, I went to UC Davis. And part of one of the summers I spent in Sacramento, and I didn't work in the capital, but it was close to the capital. And I remember feeling like a fish out of water. I felt so out of place, you know, it's such a huge area and lots of people in suits, you know, and 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 legislators and a lot of you know, good, important work that was being done. And again, I kind of felt out of place. I felt, you know, coming from Watsonville, going to Sacramento, you know, it's kind of a big change. And then June thirtieth was was different, you know, it was just, it was returning to Sacramento and recognizing people and then people recognizing me, I think, was 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 huge for me, you know, because that just goes to tell you, you know, representation. And the fact that for the first time in I don't know how long, we have somebody that's from rural California. That's the speaker of the assembly. And someone who represents Watsonville, you know, who represents my community. So so to me, that that was pretty big. Got to sit there, got to see him get sworn in by pure luck and chance. I also ran into and was able to have a very quick and small conversation with Nancy Pelosi. So that was also pretty big. And it was just a good experience, good experience, very hopeful for the future. And yeah, the the representation that we're going to 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 receive and the good that's going to come from it. That's my report.
All I did was attend the agenda planning for this month.
You actually made it to one of the trustee.
Oh. Yeah, was happy. Okay, yes, I did. And I was impressed. Our superintendent is an incredible teacher.
I did the usual stuff and what I was struck by at the Capitol Advisors workshop was I imagine that the advisor people probably compliment the local legislator wherever they do that around the state. But they were effusive about complimenting John Laird and our representatives as far as the degree to which Senator Laird knows the education budget and knows what's up for us at the local level. So that was just good to see. He's an old friend and served on city council with him a long time ago. And I do think we have good representation here. So that was that was reassuring. And the money didn't look quite as dire as some of the news reports had suggested. It might be given the thirty billion dollar deficit that the state was facing, at least for education, didn't look as as dire as it might have. So I was reasonably satisfied with that.
Bruce, I just want to interject, though. It didn't, but this is when the and now you'll get the money next year starts.
Yeah, yeah, this is, yeah, I mean, definitely the state is in a far more financially stressed place this year, this coming budget and the next few probably than it was a few years ago, a couple of years ago. So as I said, I just had so much fun at the trustee academy. And I was really pleased that I was able to contribute. Those students were so sharp and so aware of what's going on. And let me see if I can tell a story really briefly that I when I was describing to them some tricks I've learned about public speaking. One of them was to use storytelling and kind of the narrative arc, which the story starts out, sounds good. And then there's some kind of trouble or or personal struggle that has to be overcome. And then you finally get the the outcome. And I gave them a little outline of how you actually structure that kind of a persuasive talk. Or it could be a sales pitch for that matter, or a political speech or whatever. And the the students broke into five different groups. And the, the students broke into five different groups and they all took on the challenges of education. They didn't talk about, you know, climate change or other big issues, or they didn't talk about better uniforms for the school teams or something. It was just exactly on the beam of funding for teachers. They see how stressed their teachers are and for things like counseling for the students and so on, as well as curriculum and textbooks and facilities and so on. And they all addressed that. But what was challenging for me at the moment was four of the five groups. My outline was talk about a problem, talk about how great it would be to solve it, then talk about what the obstacles are for solving it, and then provide the evidence that it could be solved. And that's sort of, that's the build the tension and then release it kind of thing. And four of the groups got to a very articulate statement of the problem and of how it could be better. They were not able to give the answer as to what evidence there is that it could be better. And that just got me because they were talking about our exact issue, which is the adequacy of funding for education. I mean, that's really what it comes down to and, and the status of teachers in our society, which is so much lower than it should be and so on. And I, I felt almost like crying because they were, they left themselves in this terrible state of there's, they didn't see evidence that it could be better. So, I mean, I, I sort of tried to rescue them, but I didn't think that was really quite my role. And I mentioned, you know, Scandinavian school systems where they teach the teachers a lot better in the schools, so on. But the main thing I got from that, though, was how much fun it was and how sharp they were and how, how clearly they see what's going on. And so whether they're going to be trustees or not, these are people that are going to go ahead in their lives with a great awareness of what education really needs and what it could provide them. So that was just, that was just very cool for me. And I think I, I, I would love to be able to take part in that. That was just really fun. That's pretty much my report. I've been like floating on a cloud for two weeks now since doing that.
If I, like.
Yeah, and then we, we have to talk about our schedule.
Just, I, I have to say that, you know, we, we surveyed our students every, every meeting. And then at the, on the last day, we surveyed them and, and your, your training was one of the highlights for, for the students. And I just think it's wonderful that the, this board has made such a commitment. And you, like having Sue there that on the, on the first day and you, you, being there to present with your support, we'll definitely continue to do this. I think it's going to continue to get better and better. Andres Ortiz has also helped us organize all our presentations, all our resources into a Google Classroom. So it's like a real course and we'll be, we're going to be tying it to standards from our social studies, from, you know, just doing a variety of different things just to make sure that it, it really will, is, is going to be a model program that we could share with, with other folks. And many folks have told us that we should create an academy for adults trustees as well, that this could be something that we could use as a model. The timing obviously would have to be a little bit different, but creating that same concept for new trustees to be able to, to participate in an academy, post people who are considering running for, for the school board. They might be able to maybe come with, with a little bit more of an understanding of the different parts, the different responsibilities. And, and you, and I'm really excited that you are supporting the idea of having one of those students represent students on this board in the future. So we will be having a student representative here very soon. That goes out to you, trustee Phil Setti.
Yes, thank you. I think I mentioned long ago that Santa Clara does that. And it makes a real difference in terms of participation of adults on school boards. They, they, it's a volunteer thing. A group of school board members comes together. They host the entire county. They talk about the, the broader issues that most school boards look at. They answer questions. I think I teased you and said, that's when I learned that you never pick up your kid or drop off your kids in curlers because that's when the microphone gets shoved through your window by the news that wants you to speak on something. It was very, very helpful. And I know, well, I know personally for me, it helped me decide that I wanted to run for school board back in, I can't even, won't even mention when I was on a local board. But it was very, very helpful and I really, really encourage us to think about that.
Okay, trustees, we've had, we've been notified that there is a, an interdistrict transfer appeal that's making its way towards us and we have to respond within thirty days of when it's filed, which means that we are not able to meet that requirement at our regular meeting in August on the seventeenth. And so one possibility is we call a special meeting only for that interdistrict transfer appeal, which would be like the week before, or an alternative is to shift our regular meeting to a week earlier. And I believe that meets the thirty day requirement. The latter is my preference. So we only have one meeting to come to, but it does mean it's on a different date from normal. I guess that would be the tenth, the August tenth. So what does everybody think?
I like the idea of the one meeting, if, if it, if it fits with.
Will that work for staff?
Bruce, what time would the, would the interdistrict transfer piece be?
That would be a question for us. Would it be for and then, or would it be earlier? Then we start the regular meeting at four. But what do you think?
It's, it's really up to you. In the past, we've had a three o'clock start time for the interdistrict transfer and then a four o'clock, a regular start for the, for the board meeting. In the past, it's taken, I would say, between maybe about forty minutes for all aspects of, of the interdistrict transfer. So it'd really be up to you. We could, we could do it at three o'clock or we could start the meeting at four o'clock and go to closed session.
It's everybody's preference. I, I kind of lean towards starting a little earlier. So we're not potentially going as late, but I'm open to either one. What's everybody think? Three or four to start?
I can, I have, I'm in a training up at UC until two thirty, but I'm pretty sure I can make it down by three, depending on.
Tell us about that. Because I think if, oh. Okay. Well, if Sue, if Sue was held up in her meeting that she has at two thirty, I'm not sure she, I, I remember, I, I remember something about a lawyer telling us that if you leave your seat during one of these kinds of hearings and with the parents there, that you lose the ability to, to vote. And, and we don't want that to happen.
You are uncertain or you can make it by three or.
Well, it's supposedly over at two thirty. It's a part of an academy and it's going to be on heat bias. Maybe three thirty? That would give me safety getting down here.
I think that's a good idea that we start that a little bit later to give you enough time to drive down here.
Ed, are you gone for an extended period then, if, if we chose a different date or something, but still ahead of?
It's on, yeah. So on the tenth. I'm sorry, give me a second. I can do four thirty. I could be here by four thirty.
On the tenth. I don't have a, I picture of what our agenda is for that month.
Bruce, I'm going to make every, every effort I can to be there in person. So knowing in advance and, and whatever allows me to kind of prep for that.
I have a question then.
Go ahead.
So don't we have to be in person for that?
For the hearing?
The hearing, right? That, that's kind of what I.
No, you, you're, you're exactly right, Ed.
I just want to make sure I didn't misunderstand.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the, the entire meeting period. I'm going to attempt absolutely to be there in person.
I'm, I'm okay with four thirty, assuming it's okay with the rest of the board, if that can accommodate you, that'd be fine with me. That works for staff. I mean, again.
Yeah, no, we can definitely make it work for us. But just to clarify, so that, so we're looking at starting the board meeting. We need two times, right? So the board meeting and then the closed session part. So the open session and the closed session. So which, what, when you say four thirty, that's for the, for the open session or for the interdistrict transfer session?
Aren't we going to do the interdistrict transfer first, right?
Usually.
We started at four thirty.
Yeah, yes. Okay, so they would, they would be a, a different, we, we would do it on the tenth and start with the closed session or while we would open them, the meeting, go and do the interdistrict transfer. And then we would, we would continue with the regular meeting.
Yeah, okay. Is that okay with everybody? Do we need a motion probably to adopt that schedule?
Okay, I'm unclear. If Ed's not available till four thirty, does that mean we're not doing the interdistrict transfer part until four thirty?
That's what we were, that's the idea we were working on.
Okay. And then the board meeting would likely be like five thirty-ish.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then just to clarify, President Van Allen, there is nothing that's too pressing. That's going to be very lengthy at that meeting.
Good, thank you.
What did she say about, I think it was Rose that said something about five thirty?
The, basically, we will start, we will convene at four thirty. The first thing we'll do is the interdistrict transfer process. And then our regular meeting will follow that. And so she was estimating that it might, that might be at five thirty. It all depends how long we take for the interdistrict transfer appeal.
But we anticipate that the interdistrict transfer appeal would start then at four thirty?
Yes. Which is when we would convene.
Suits me. Anytime suits me on that day.
Okay. I'm still not clear if I need, if I need to vote to change our schedule.
Yes, I would, yes, please.
Yeah. So I need a motion to change the schedule to convene the board meeting.
How, how can we do that when it's not agendized?
Well, our schedule is actually on the agenda.
It's, it is actually agendized at all for all our board meetings. So you, you are able to change your, your calendar on any board meeting.
Okay, then I'll move to change.
Thank you. Motion, second.
A second.
Second by Roth, motion by Phil City, second by Roth, to convene the, the next county board meeting and interdistrict transfer hearing on August tenth, starting at four thirty PM. All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Great. Motion carries unanimously. And I think that's all for our agenda today. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.